Yeah, it's a quiet night.
Been working in Auburn, Michigan.
You go any hoop.
Test.
Oh, yeah, right, same thing, yeah, yeah.
Do some work at Halloweck.
I heard somebody say.
He was driving.
So you're driving there? Good.
You know, they always say.
Please rise to the front of the witness. Hi. Your name is. United States of America. It's with your honor that we stand. One nation under God. The justice of all.
Good evening, everybody. All right, please call the roll.
Mayor Delacqua.
Here.
Director Vlachan Natalo.
Here.
Councilman-at-Large Kraneck.
Here.
Councilman-at-Large Trevis.
Here.
Board One Councilman, Biassiatah.
Here.
Board Two Councilman, Frondor.
Here.
Board Three Councilman, Kukro.
Here.
Board Four Councilman, Petro.
Here.
Director Public Service and Properties, Lobe.
Here.
Building Commissioner, Morrow.
Okay, we'll start with the reading and disposal of the journal for the minutes of the regular council meeting held June 13th, 2016.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
Having read the council minutes of the council meeting dated June 13th, 2016, I find no errors or omissions, and therefore I move that they be approved as printed.
Jim? Oh, second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kraneck.
Yes.
Kukro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes. The minutes for the regular council meeting held June 13th, 2016 have been accepted. Moving on to consent agenda number one.
Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiatah.
If there's no division in the question, I move that we accept consent agenda. Number one for June 27, 2016.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kraneck.
Yes.
Kukro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes. Consent agenda number one has been accepted. Moving on to consent agenda number two, and I will be recusing myself from this item.
Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiatah.
If there's no division in question, I move that we accept consent agenda number two for June 27, 2016.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, is there any discussion?
Yes, I'll be recusing myself as well.
Thank you. Any further discussions? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Kraneck.
Yes.
Kukro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Consent agenda number two has passed.
Four votes.
Okay. All right, moving on to resolution number 39, 2016. I will make a motion that we suspend the rules under the charter and read resolution number 39, 2016 by title only for its first and final reading.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion?
I'd like to read into the record a message.
Please do.
Mike Barth sent a communication this afternoon. Addressed to me, and he wrote. I am not going to be able to make it tonight, so please read the following into the record. I thought I might be able to make it tonight to receive my commendation. Unfortunately, I am running later than I thought. I would still like to convey my thanks to all of you for your recognition of my time on council and my achievements while serving. I especially want to thank the residents who overwhelmingly elected me five times to either Board One Councilman or Council-at-Large. It certainly was an honor to serve our city. Seven Hills is a great community, that has been very good to me and my family, and I will certainly miss it. Thanks again, and good luck in the future. Mike Barth.
Thank you, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kraneck.
Yes.
Kukro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes. Resolution number 39, 2016 has been read for its final reading.
I'll read it.
You're gonna read it in its entirety?
No.
Okay. Go on.
Resolution number 39, 2016, introduced by Mayor Delacqua and Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Kraneck, Biassiatah, Kukro, and Petro. A resolution of commendation to Michael C. Barth, Councilman-at-Large, Board One Councilman, Mayor, Council President, and Council President Pro Tem of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio.
Okay, now resolution 39, 2016 has been read for its final reading, and I will make a motion to adopt resolution number 39, 2016.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kraneck.
Yes.
Kukro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes. Resolution number 39, 2016 has been adopted. Moving on to the reports of committees, the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee last met on June 20th. Those meeting minutes are forthcoming, and our next meeting will be held on July 18th. Public Works Committee, Councilman Petro.
Mr. Chairman, our next meeting will be on the 5th of July.
Thank you. Community, um, there is no community service chairman temporarily, so we'll move on to Police and Safety Committee, Councilman Kraneck.
Mr. President, the Police, Fire, and Safety, uh, last met, I think it was on the 20th, their, the meeting, uh, minutes of the meeting are still forthcoming, our next scheduled meeting will be July 18th.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Councilman Kukro.
Our last meeting minutes are still forthcoming, and our next meeting is July 18th.
Thank you. Rules, Ordinances, and Ethics, Councilman Biassiatah.
Thank you, Mr. President, our last rules meeting was a special meeting on June 13th, those minutes are now in file with the Clerk's Office, our next meeting will be on July 11th.
Thank you. Finance, Civil Service, and Personnel, Councilman Frondor.
Yes, Mr. President, our last meeting was held on June 20th, our next meeting will be held on July 5th, and the minutes from the June 20th meeting are on file with the Council Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, are there any appointments and confirmations tonight?
No, sir.
Thank you. Communications, petitions, and claims.
There are none.
There are none. Council will now be open to the audience on legislation only, if you have any comments regarding anything on our agenda, please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Hello, everyone. I'm Reg Pagetton, 267 Mapleview Drive.
Hey, Reg.
I just really have one question, or maybe. Uh, normally I would ask him there, but I think he would defer it to Dick. Uh, as he did with the word limited. I'm gonna read it. In the dear ordinance, the first, second, and third reading, the word reduction is used. The word reduction, like the word limited, has no meaning unless you have a definite number on which to base your reduction. What is that number?
I'm just going to state again, as I did a couple weeks ago, that the dear ordinance is not being voted on tonight, it is being tabled until we get recommendations from the ad hoc committee that was appointed, and everything may be subject to change at this point.
Okay, so I can ask that again at another time.
You're more than welcome to. You're welcome. Is there anybody further?
How strict are you about stuff being legislation? I just want something on record.
This is legislation only, and, yeah, first state your name and address.
Lucy McKernan, 755 Hillside, is there anything on here about the building department, or appointments, or new hires, or anything like that?
No.
Okay. Because I had a major problem with the building department the past couple weeks, and I don't know how, because they're not responding to me.
Can we do that during the general miscellaneous at the end of the meeting?
At the end of this meeting tonight?
Yes, there's a section for public comment regarding anything.
If I stick around, we can do that, okay? I'll try to stick around, thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. Okay, anybody further for public comment regarding legislation? Okay. All right, we will start with ordinance number 63, 2016.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
I move that council suspends rules under the charter and reads ordinance 63, 2016 by title only for its final reason.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kraneck.
Yes.
Kukro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Ordinance number 63, 2016, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Barth, Kraneck, Biassiatah, Kukro, and Petro. In ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Court View Justice Solutions of Canton, Ohio, for the purpose of performing annual maintenance and support of the mayor's court legacy case management system. Software and the right to use license and appropriating the sum not to exceed $2,188 for said service.
Ordinance number 63, 2016 has been read for its third and final reading, is there any motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
I move council passes ordinance 63, 2016.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kraneck.
Yes.
Kukro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes. Ordinance number 63, 2016 has been passed. Moving on to ordinance number 64, 2016.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kraneck.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read ordinance number 64, 2016 by title only for its third and final reading.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kraneck.
Yes.
Kukro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Ordinance number 64, 2016, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Barth, Kraneck, Biassiatah, Kukro, and Petro. In ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with ABC Fire Incorporated of North Walton, Ohio, for the purpose of replacing the smoke detectors for the ceiling of the Community Recreation Center Gymnasium, along with troubleshooting the duct detector RTU-7 at the Community Recreation Center, and authorizing an amount not to exceed $4,995 for said service.
Ordinance number 64, 2016 has been read for its third and final reading, is there any motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kraneck.
I move that we pass ordinance number 64, 2016.
Is there a second? Oh, second that. Yeah, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kraneck.
Yes.
Kukro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes. Ordinance number 64, 2016 has been passed. Moving on to ordinance number 66, 2016.
Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiatah.
I move we table ordinance number 66-2016.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kraneck.
Yes.
Kukro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes. Ordinance number 66, 2016 has been tabled. Moving on to the second reading of ordinance number 70, 2016.
Ordinance number 70, 2016, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Barth, Kraneck, Biassiatah, Kukro, and Petro. In ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Cuyahoga County District Board of Health for the purpose of monitoring and testing MS-4 out call locations as required, required by the city's National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit for stormwater and appropriating funds not to exceed $3,711 for said service for the year 2016, report period.
Ordinance number 70, 2016 has been read for its second reading. We'll now have the second reading of ordinance number 71, 2016.
Ordinance number 71, 2016, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Barth, Kraneck, Biassiatah, Kukro, and Petro. In ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Toshiba Business Solutions of Akron, Ohio, for the semi-annual maintenance and support contract for the E Studio 2330 CUSN black color multifunction unit in the Engineering Department, and appropriating a sum not to exceed $474.36 every six months for the life of the machine for said service.
Ordinance number 71, 2016 has been read for its second reading. We'll now have the second reading of ordinance number 72, 2016.
Ordinance number 72, 2016, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Barth, Kraneck, Biassiatah, Kukro, and Petro. In ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Extend Technologies of Broadview Heights, Ohio, in an amount not to exceed $1,584 to assess the entire city of Seven Hills Municipal Building Network and to create a network map showing locations, equipment, and IP addresses to provide easier network management and overview.
Ordinance number 72, 2016 has been read for its second reading. We will now have the second reading of ordinance number 73, 2016.
Ordinance number 73, 2016, introduced by Mayor Delacqua and Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Barth, Kraneck, Biassiatah, Kukro, and Petro. In ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an affiliation agreement for job training experiential learning program on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, and the Parma City School District Board of Education of Parma, Ohio, for the purpose of providing practical, community-based work experience for the educational benefit of the students in a natural work environment at the Seven Hills City Administration Building.
Ordinance number 73, 2016 has been read for its second reading. Moving on to amended ordinance number 74, 2016.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
I move that council suspends the rules under the charter and reads ordinance, amended ordinance number 74, 2016 for its second and final reading and declaring an emergency.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
We're just, uh, doing the spending for the reading, next one. Okay, um, please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kraneck.
Yes.
Kukro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 74, 2016, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Barth, Kraneck, Biassiatah, Kukro, and Petro. In ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with various vendors for the purpose, for the purchase, installation, and necessary appurtenances of six watch guard 4RE cameras, one computer server, and the installation of the watch guard cameras for the city of Seven Hills Police Department, and appropriating the sum not to exceed $44,799.50 for said purchases and services, of which $20,000 of grant money received from the Cuyahoga County Prosecutor's Office will be used for said purchases and services, and declaring an emergency.
Amended ordinance number 74, 2016 has been read for its second and final reading, is there any motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
I move that we pass ordinance number 74, 2016.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? Councilman Frondor.
Yes, I would just like to offer a few comments about this, uh, ordinance. It is for the purchase of, um, cameras, uh, dash cameras, and the police brought to us a grant, uh, from the county that paid for $20,000 of the $44,799. The challenge that we had as a city was, how do we come up with the balance, uh, without affecting the general fund? And through working with our finance department and in cooperation with the police department, uh, we were able to utilize, uh, some existing funds, uh, and so we don't have to touch the general fund, which was our goal, uh, from the very beginning. So I'm pleased to say that, uh, we can now order the cameras, uh, which are sorely needed by our police department, and, uh, we kill two birds with one stone.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman, any further comment? I'd just like to echo what Councilman Frondor said, uh, the whole purpose was to avoid pulling money out of the general fund, and just by doing a little bit of homework, we figured out how to do it, and, um, we need to keep doing our due diligence to make sure we can try to do things like this in the future. Okay, please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kraneck.
Yes.
Kukro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes. Amended ordinance number 74, 2016 has passed. Moving on to ordinance number 75, 2016.
Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
I move that we table, um, ordinance number 75, 2016.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kraneck.
Yes.
Kukro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes. Ordinance number 75, 2016 has been tabled. Moving on to ordinance number 77, 2016. I'm, I will make a motion that we remove the emergency clause from ordinance number 77. And that's a amend, I, I move, I'm sorry, I move that we amend ordinance number 77 by removing the emergency clause.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kraneck.
Yes.
Kukro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes. Ordinance number 77, 2016 has been amended, we will now have the first reading of amended ordinance number 77, 2016.
Amended ordinance number 77, 2016, introduced by Mayor Delacqua and Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Kraneck, Biassiatah, Kukro, and Petro. In ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an economic development job creation and job retention agreement with Blue Chip Consulting Group, LLC.
Ordinance number 70, amended ordinance number 77, 2016 has been read for its first reading. We will now move on to ordinance number 78, 2016.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
I move that council suspends the rules under the charter and reads, uh, ordinance number 78, 2016, uh, by title only, uh, for its first reading and declaring an emergency.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kraneck.
Yes.
Kukro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Ordinance number 78, 2016, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Kraneck, Biassiatah, Kukro, and Petro. In ordinance to amend ordinance number 45, 2016, passed by the council of the city of Seven Hills on April 25th, 2016, which authorized and directed the mayor to enter into a five-year agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Xerox Government Systems, LLC of Urbandale, Iowa. Said amendment necessary to change the effective term of the contract to July 1st through June 30th, 2021, and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 78, 2016 has been read for its first and final reading, is there any motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
I move that we pass ordinance number 78, 2016.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kraneck.
Yes.
Kukro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes. Ordinance number 78, 2016 has passed. Moving on to ordinance number 79, 2016.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kraneck.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read ordinance number 79, 2016 by title only for its first and final reading.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kraneck.
Yes.
Kukro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Ordinance number 79, 2016, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Kraneck, Biassiatah, Kukro, and Petro. In ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a commercial services agreement with Cox Business appropriating a sum not to exceed $1,561.05 per month for 60 months, for the installation, training, and warranty with the appurtenances for a citywide phone system and service agreement with Cox Business, and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 79, 2016 has been read for its first and final reading, is there any motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Kraneck.
I move that we pass ordinance 79, 2016.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kraneck.
Yes.
Kukro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes. Ordinance number 79, 2016 has been passed. Moving on to ordinance number 80, 2016.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
I move that council suspends the rules under the charter and reads ordinance 80, 2016 by title only for its final reading.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
I move that council suspends the rules under the charter and reads ordinance 80, 2016 by title only for its final reading.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Krainek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Ordinance number 80, 2016 introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Krainek, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro. An ordinance to man subsection 911.068 and amend subsection 911.069, conditions precedent to final approval of record map issuance of building permits as contained in chapter 911, acceptance and dedication of subdivisions generally of Title III and Plating of Part IX Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 80, 2016 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
I move that we pass ordinance 80, 2016.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? I'd just like to mention that I'm particularly happy about this ordinance. Currently, when a developer or a builder is building a home in Seven Hills, they pay a $500 fee to our Tree Fund and a $500 fee to our Parks Fund. The intent and purpose of this legislation is just to change that fee structure, and moving forward, $750 will be put towards the parks and $250 will put towards the Tree Fund. And this is more long-term planning than anything with potential development coming to the city, and I feel this is a way to generate additional revenues to help out our parks, which are sorely in need of help. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Krainek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Ordinance number 80, 2016 introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Krainek, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio with RNK Technologies Incorporated of North Ridgeville, Ohio for full service maintenance on the Xerox 8825 HP DJ 500 plotter located in the Engineering Department of the city of Seven Hills and appropriating the sum not to exceed the monthly base rate of $246.74 plus a monthly usage charge of 95.095 square feet for the 12-month term of the agreement.
Ordinance number 81, 2016 has been read for its first reading. We will now have the first reading of ordinance 82, 2016.
Ordinance number 82, 2016 introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Krainek, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro. An ordinance to man section 159.01, court costs of chapter 159 Mayor's Court as contained in title VII judicial of part I Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio for the purpose of increasing the court cost for all violations occurring in the jurisdictional limits of the city of Seven Hills with the exception of parking, pedestrian, and seatbelt violations.
Ordinance number 82, 2016 has been read for its first reading. We will now have the second reading of amended resolution number 38, 2016.
Amended resolution number 38, 2016 introduced by Mayor Delacquaola and Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Farth, Krainek, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro. A resolution declaring it necessary to renew an existing tax levy, providing funds for the payment of permanent and part-time firefighters, including the payment of the firefighter employer's contribution required under section 742.34 of the Revised Code and the provision of ambulance, paramedic, and other emergency medical services operated by the city's fire department pursuant to sections 5705.03 and 5705.19i of the Revised Code.
Amended resolution number 38, 2016 has been read for its second reading. We will now have the, we will now move on to resolution number 40, 2016.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukral.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read the resolution number 40, 2016 for its first and final reading and declaring an emergency.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Krainek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Resolution number 40, 2016 introduced by Mayor Delacquaola and councilperson Trevis, Frondor, Krainek, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Seven Hills to sign a letter directed to Warwick Communications of Broadview Heights, Ohio informing them of the city's intent to terminate the existing contract between the city of Seven Hills and Warwick Communications Advisors and declaring an emergency.
Resolution number 40, 2016 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukral.
I move that we adopt resolution number 40, 2016.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Krainek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes. Resolution number 40, 2016 has been adopted. Now move on to resolution number 41, 2016.
Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiatah.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read resolution 41-2016 by title only for its first and final reading.
Second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Krainek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Resolution number 41, 2016 introduced by Mayor Delacquaola and Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Krainek, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro. A resolution approving and accepting a temporary utility easement granted to the city of Seven Hills, Ohio by Alan F. and Donna L. Blake for the installation, construction, and maintenance of utilities, together with all appurtenances, appropriating the sum not to exceed $310 for the acquisition of said easement and declaring an emergency.
Resolution number 41, 2016 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiatah.
I move that we adopt resolution 41-2016.
Second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Krainek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes. Resolution number 41, 2016 has been adopted. We will now have the first reading of resolution number 42, 2016.
Resolution number 42, 2016 introduced by Mayor Delacquaola and councilpersons Trevis, Frondor, Krainek, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro. A resolution approving the proposed alternative tax budget for the city of Seven Hills, Ohio for the fiscal year 2017.
Resolution number 42, 2016 has been read for its first reading. Okay, we will now move on to council being open to the audience on any particular issue you wish to address. If you have any comments, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Anybody in the second row?
Lucy, 755 Hillside Road. First, I want to say thank you to the mayor for helping us to get an extension on, we received a five-day notice because of our landscaping at our property at 755 Hillside. I'm going to try to stick to the facts here. I'm not really sure what I'm asking for as much as just awareness of what's going on with the building department. First of all, the letter came in my name only, and genuinely, mayor, thank you for helping us through your office get an extension. We really needed that. I was about to go see my 93-year-old father in Tennessee 36 hours before I got that letter, and it was really stressful. The timing couldn't have been worse. It caused me a lot of stress and anxiety, but my name was only, the only name on the letter. My husband's name was co-owner of the property was not on there. Retrospectively, a paranoid person might think I was being singled out, but what I would like to stick to are the facts here, the timing of that letter, the lack of the response from the building department. I did contact them six times. My husband contacted them once. We went in person to ask them to come to our property and explain to us what exactly it is that they wanted us to cut. I do have some native perennial plants that, to the untrained eye, from the street, from a drive-by, might appear to be quote-unquote weeds or grass. Actually, these are soil-restorative native perennial plants that we put in after the EPA mandated stormwater or sewer septic while we did the stormwater on the foundation. So, and there are mint plants that keep away mice and ants naturally because I can't use chemicals. I'm sensitive to chemicals. So these are all, these are, in my opinion, humble opinion, these are all not weeds or noxious, I think is the term, or grasses. They are edible, herbal, medicinal, even the burdock, which can be considered to be, in some people's minds, a weed. The root can be used as medicine, and I've used it for that, and the leaves are actually edible. There's all these native perennials that are up against the foundation of the house, and until they come to bloom in July, they look from the street maybe like weeds, but they're not. I never had a chance to prove this to the building department because they absolutely refused to come until we shook the cage so hard that Mr. Vitardi came to our house, blocked me in our driveway, and from the time he appeared on our property, he absolutely refused to look me in the eye or even face me. He turned his back to me and only addressed my husband, and my name was the only name on the letter. So naturally, I was furious, and I had to get out of my driveway. I couldn't even ask him to get out of my driveway so that I could get, I couldn't even ask him to do that. He was absolutely not even acknowledging my existence. I'm not sure what precipitated that. So what I would say is we wound up spending $75 because we didn't know, so my husband went in the back. There was admittedly a little patch in the very far back of our yard. It was over the limit. It was over the ordinance. It was a violation. We immediately tried to cut, there's a little habitat far away from anybody seeing it. We tried to cut it, it broke the belt on our mower, and then I had to pay a professional to use a tractor. So we lost $75 we didn't even have. We're both, you know, working five jobs between the two of us. So the refusal to address me, the blocking me in the driveway, and to use legal terms, arbitrary and capricious, and unable to petition our government for redress, which is a little of an extreme term, but not even able to petition the building department to come and communicate with us in a reasonable term so that I could at least say, look, this is not, you know, a noxious weed. This is actually medicinal. I didn't expect them to go through my entire property with each plant, but I did expect somewhat of a reasonable response or some response, and I didn't get it. So I'm just about done here. I would ask that the building department have a new policy where you, any city vehicle, you know, Hillside has nowhere to pull off. We know that. And I'm on the side with no sidewalk, the north side, but if you're going to park in our driveway, park to one side or the other. It's a double-wide. I would also say that the lack of responsiveness, the timing was very uncanny. Again, I can't prove this, but it really seems strange to me that this would have happened at that exact time. The stress and anxiety, the financial loss to both my husband and I, he's at work right now, in fact, and the inability to communicate or concerns or ask questions. I do have a June 30, thank you, mayor, for helping with that through Kathy Holland, and a June 30 deadline. We did get an extension, but that's the date that I'm taking, and I'm not trying to make you feel sorry for me, but that is the date I'm taking my brother to chemo, my brother-in-law to chemotherapy. He's got brain cancer. So I couldn't get them to even talk to us today or come out today so that it's not just piling up on us before Thursday. I'm not asking for another extension. Just please be aware the building department is really behaving in a most unprofessional manner, and I don't know if I was singled out or if they're doing this to everybody. So I know I talked long. Thank you. Should I sit down or? Mayor?
Thanks, Lucy. I'm sorry to hear about the medical situation you're experiencing there. If you'd like to stop in, perhaps even as early as tomorrow morning, I'd be willing to go over this with you in detail and see what else we can do to help out. It sounds like you have a tough situation on your hands there.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm not sure about tomorrow morning, but I will talk to you sometime this week. Are you in your office every morning this week or?
I'm here regularly, but to say specifically, I don't know, but if you'll communicate directly with Kathy.
Call ahead.
We'll set up a specific time to sit down and talk.
Okay.
And good luck with what you're experiencing.
Okay. Thank you very much, but at least don't block us in the driveway. Maybe that could be a new policy with the city. Put the vehicles over to one side or the other, and thank you, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. Anybody further in the second row? Third row? Fourth row? Fifth row? Now move on to reports and communications from the mayor and safety director, Mayor Delacquaola.
Nothing further this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. Reports from directors of departments and other officials. Director of Law, Richard Pigmatello. Thank you. Director of Public Service and Properties, Stuart Levese.
Yes, Mr. President. I want to thank council for passing ordinance 79, 2016 for the rental of a new citywide phone system. In fact, the gentleman in charge from Cox Cable, Mr. Kurt Hoshberg, is in the audience, and he's eager to start the project, and I know he's going to do a good job for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Okay, council miscellaneous. Let's start, I'm sorry? Okay. All right, we'll start with Councilman Frondor.
Okay. I'd just like to say that, you know, it was a real privilege, once again, to participate in the Seven Hills Baseball Federation All-Star Program yesterday, yesterday afternoon, although I was there for half the ceremonies, but you know, my immediate reaction is, you know, just to see how excited the kids are, number one, to receive recognition, and then number two, to actually play in an All-Star game, you know, really makes me think back to my childhood, you know, what a special time that is. that is. Quite honestly, you never forget that, you know, so it was really, you know, it was really a great thing. Tony Terry did a great job being the emcee, and my co-council people, Matt Traffus and Jim Kukral, passed out the awards. It was, oh, and I also forgot to say, we, everyone sang the Star Spangled Banner a cappella, so that was, that was a treat.
Thank you, councilman, and everybody needs to hear Tony Terry sing one day. Councilman Petro.
I have no miscellaneous, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilman Kukral.
Yeah, I thank you very much. I'll reiterate what Councilman Frondorf said. It was a great event, and Tony Terry did a wonderful job emceeing the event, and I think the best part for me, being a new councilperson and being so involved with the parks, was being able to walk around with pride because the parks looked really good, and Stuart's team is really kicking butt. And I saw people that I knew from Valley View, Broadview Heights, Brexville, Independence, Newburgh Heights, that came up to me and said, "Wow, this is not as bad as I remember it." And that's progress to me. Okay, so we're going to keep going, and service is doing a great job, and hopefully, in a couple of years, they'll be saying, "Wow, this is nicer than what we have." So, it's nice that other cities are starting to notice. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, councilman. Councilman Kranek.
No miscellaneous, Mr. President.
Councilman Biaseata.
Not today, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of things. I also really enjoyed the All-Star Weekend. It's one of my favorite events of the year, and as the two colleagues of mine indicated, the kids were pretty excited. And I do want to mention that on Sunday, when I was going from park to park, I ran into Service Director LeVeece, and I was really impressed that he was checking on the parks on a weekend, and it shows your dedication to the city, and thank you for doing what you've been doing. Another thing, as everybody knows, we have a vacancy on city council. According to our city charter, it indicates that the council shall consider the list of defeated candidates and awards or at-large, but may appoint any other elector meeting the qualifications of this charter. I am submitting to the record, and for a minute, a letter that I wrote to all of the defeated council candidates inviting them to submit a resume for consideration. I'm passing it to the council clerk now. I have a prepared statement that I'd like to read. We are just over six months into this current term, and needless to say, it has been a very challenging time for our city, and many changes are being made. I'm very proud of this council for moving forward with the beginning of changing the status quo in Seven Hills. I'll be the first to admit that change is difficult, and changing a system that has been broken for over a decade is even harder. One thing that I have learned during my time as council president so far is that it takes an extraordinary amount of time to run this city the proper way. All of our elected officials are part-time. We have a significant budget, well over a hundred employees, and significant diverse functions within our government operation. Things are being missed. Certain departments do not run as well as they should, and the timeliness of addressing issues is often extremely low. It is time that we have a full-time mayor who can be at City Hall daily to run the city the way it should be run, and these sentiments have previously been attested to by our current mayor. As we are all aware, the vast majority of expense to our budget is payroll, and we all know that the current rate of spending cannot be sustained for much longer. Reductions in expenses were long overdue. I'm very proud that this council has cut approximately four-hundred-thousand dollars off the budget so far. At times, it was difficult considering the numerous veto overrides council had to do and the obstruction from certain city employees and contractors. To date, we have made reductions in most departments, including the Recreation Center, the mayor's office, the building department, the magistrate, the service department, fire prevention officer, and engineering department. More needs to be done. This November, we have two tax issues that will appear on the ballot. The first is an income tax restructuring, of which there are two proposals. First, it may seem complicated, but it more than likely will be a plan that will tremendously help our budget issues and is being supported by council. We're going to be asking the residents to support increasing the tax rate from two percent to two-and-a-half percent and adjusting the credit limit from one-point-one percent to one-point-six-five percent. This will generate hundreds of thousands of dollars paid primarily from people that work in Seven Hills but live in a different community. It does not affect retirees and will actually give a five-and-a-half percent decrease in the amount of income tax paid to most every resident that works in a different community with a, with a few small exceptions. The other proposal from Mayor Delacqua is an action that council can take without a vote of the people that would decrease the credit from one-hundred percent to fifty percent, and the effect would be an increase of sixty-one percent to the income tax-paying residents working outside of Seven Hills. I truly hope that all of our elected officials actively support and campaign for an income tax initiative this November. It is critical to the future of Seven Hills. In addition to the income tax issue, we will be asking for a renewal of the existing fire levy of one-point-seven mils and not an increase to your property tax of twenty-four percent as was proposed by Mayor Delacqua. In the spirit of transparency, I will mention that when and if it passes, there will, there will more than likely be a small tweaking of staffing in the fire department. Yes, change is hard and very difficult, and very difficult decisions need to be made and are being made. At this point, we cannot continue running the city as it has been for the past twelve years. Unfortunately, further sacrifices need to be made. Given all these facts, it is vitally important for everyone to work together to pass an income tax and fire levy renewal in November. All entities involved in the city in one capacity or another need to work together to get these issues passed. If an opposition campaign is mounted and these two issues fail, it will have a devastating